We call this meeting to order. We will now have Minister Anne Kavan from Central United Methodist Associate Minister to lead us in our invocation.
I don't know about y'all, but I need to take a deep breath because it's already been a day. So let's just all take a deep breath and ponder our purpose and why we're really here today. Gracious God, you are good, and we come before you today with humble hearts. We seek your guidance and your wisdom as we gather for this council meeting. We thank you for the gift of this community and for the opportunity to serve it with integrity and love. Lord, we ask for your presence to fill this room, that your spirit may inspire each of us in our decisions. Grant us discernment to seek justice, compassion to care for those in need, and the strength to lead with humility and honor. May our actions reflect your will and promote peace, unity, and prosperity within our good city. We pray for our city's leaders, our first responders, workers, educators, and all of those who labor to serve our community. Bless them with your wisdom, your protection, and your endurance, and help us all to work together for the common good, to lift up the marginalized, to care for the most vulnerable among us. Almighty God, may we always remember that true leadership is rooted in love, service, and a heart that seeks your will above all else. Guide us in all that we do, so that your name may be glorified in our decisions and in our actions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Next, we will have Matt Ellis. Matt is an Assistant U.S. Attorney of the State of South Carolina. He serves as Deputy Sheriff with Robeson County, Red Springs, and the whole county sheriff's office. Matt was also a Marine and served as a sergeant of the 1st Battalion, 6th Marine. He has received two Purple Hearts and a Navy recommendation with a V valor. We are honored to have U.S. Attorney Matt Ellis to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have approval of minutes for November the 12th and also November the 18th.
So moved.
Second. There, it has been moved properly second, and now we will ready for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. The minutes have been accepted. Next, we will have honors and recognitions. Special recognition for Rob Hill, the USTA Tennis Professional of the Year.
At the 2024 USTA South Carolina Conference, remember that Rob Hill was honored as Tennis Professional of the Year as manager of the award-winning app employed Florence Tennis Center, fostered community engagement with tournaments, events, and partnerships. Renowned for his dedication to drone training, utilizing the USTA to teach technique, he created local community environment that promotes children's communities, and we are honored today to recognize Mr. Rob Hill for that accomplishment.
Counsel, would you send so that... Congratulations so much. Would you take a second?
I'm just grateful we're able to set a wonderful floor in the city that is, I think, amazing, successful to everybody, and having such a great TCA, like Florence Center, that has the same initiative leading.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Also, in January 2024, the USTA Southern District named our Recreation Department of the Year. So we are, we are, we're recently informed that we are the winners of the 2024 South Carolina Rex and Parks Association Community Champion Award. This award recognizes the quality of our programs and the innovation made to meet the ever-demanding needs of this service area. So our Rex Department stands so that we can give you an applause. Thank you all so much for the hard work that you do, and it is truly appreciated by us and all the kids that you serve. Next, we will have appearances before court, I mean, not court. Not court, but council. And Dr. Cavishstock, I don't think we see him, and so next, Lakeisha Jones, I don't think she is here either, but Brian and Jody Ransom, we would hear from you now.
Do I get to take the others' time?
Yes. You can, you can have 30 seconds of their turn.
Thank you, City Council, for the opportunity to speak with you today. When I was young, I heard of a World War II story about two soldiers, hungry, tired, cold. They entered a village seeking food. Each door they knocked on brought the same response: No, we don't have enough to spare. The soldiers, undeterred, started a campfire and placed two cobblestones in a pot of water. When villagers curiously approached, the soldiers called it stone soup and mentioned how wonderful it would taste with a little onion, a little carrot, a little bit of salt. Slowly, each villager brought out what they could spare. Together, they created a feast that fed the entire community. One Table Florence embodies this spirit of collaboration, where individuals, organizations, and businesses come together to create something truly remarkable for our city.
So this year's event was a true testament of Florence's commitment to generosity and unity. There were churches, businesses, civic organizations, and individuals that all pulled together. I'm going to attempt to name a few, just to give you the depth and the plethora of the people who were involved in bringing this together. So bear with me as I read through this list, but know that I'm going to miss many people who contributed. And so this is just to give you a taste of the contributions that came through. So material support came from Hyman Paper &amp; Chemical, First Baptist, Lamb's Chapel, First Presbyterian, West Florence Fires Department, Helping Florence Flourish, Whosoever Church. Food came from Junebug's Care. In fact, Junebug's Care ran the on-site kitchen, making sure that meals were safe and ready. Individuals brought side dishes. We had 60 green bean casseroles. St. Luke's brought 40 green bean casseroles alone. 59 sweet potato casseroles. 1,400 servings of cranberry sauce that the King's Academy Key Club had raised with a can drive at their school. And then Refreshing Springs Family Worship Center decanned and prepared for the event. 1,400 servings of smoked turkey were prepared on-site by Junebug's Care. 1,500 dinner rolls were donated by Lakeisha Godbolt. 1,400 servings of dessert came from a mosaic of individuals, groups, and businesses, both local and as far away as Surfside. Chartwell's, who provides the Florence One meals, donated 500 servings of cake, while the Lutheran Church of the Incarnate Word donated 250 servings of pie. Soft drinks and water came from Pepsi, and tea came from New Ebenezer Church, as well as Charity Ministry of Hope. Florence One Schools not only promoted the event, but 4th and 5th grade classes at Wallace Gregg, Lester, Briggs, and Lucy T. Davis Elementary Schools made centerpieces and wreaths. A group of high school band students from West Florence called the Lucky Knights stunned the crowd with a stellar performance on the gazebo. Any leftovers were taken over to My Brother's Keeper and were split with House of Hope. St. Anne's food pantry received some of the food as well. Overall, there were 1,000 people who were served a meal in the park, and there were many others who attended who did not eat but stayed to enjoy the celebration with the community.
There was a mosaic of pastors who prayed five-minute blessings every 25 minutes or so for the event. There were five in total. Some of those were Baptists, Nazarenes, Seventh-day Adventists, and non-denominational. They encompassed Black, White, and Hispanic communities. Beyond the numbers, though, the community is what makes One Table Florence so unforgettable. A man from California who had spent 20 years Thanksgiving alone celebrated with others for the second year in a row at One Table Florence. The Seventh-day Adventist pastor who gave one of the blessings shared a heartwarming story of meeting an Indian couple new to Florence, working for Thermo Fisher. They've struggled to make friends while being here, but over a shared meal at One Table, they found a connection, and later that night, the pastor invited that family over to his house for dinner with them. We even had a surprise visit from Santa Claus, who came from St. Anne's. It was loved by all. It was really special. And a special shout-out goes to J&amp;J Leadership Academy. Fifteen young men from this organization came out and helped us set up for the event early on Thanksgiving morning, proving their mission to empower and transform the youth into community leaders.
And I'm going to take that extra 30 seconds. Thank you very much, Mayor. And so as Florence community grows, so does the need for space where we can grow together, not just as neighbors but as friends. One Table Florence is that space. It's more than a meal. It's an opportunity to set aside differences, give thanks, and foster a spirit of unity. Last year, we struggled to describe what this event could become, as unique and as experienced as it is. It's hard to explain in words. It really is a reflection of the community. This year, however, it blossomed into something that exceeded all expectations: a beautiful mosaic of people working together in love and gratitude. At the end of the day, the Florence community is stronger together.
And we are really thrilled about the growing impact of One Table Florence. Other cities have actually reached out, started reaching out to us, asking how can they replicate this event in their community? This would not have been possible without the entire early support of the City Council, Florence Parks and Recreation, and the broader community at large. As we plan for the third year, we ask you to join us in fortifying this event and ensuring it becomes a lasting tradition. Can the Florence community count on City Council's support for One Table Florence as we continue planting seeds of hope and gratitude, not only for our city but beyond? Together, we can make this vision flourish. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Pro tip.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First off, I'm sure I'll speak for everybody, just thank you for what you do. It's selfless giving, and especially at that time of year, we all just are appreciative of what you're doing and bringing this to our community and allowing an opportunity for the community to come together like they do. So thank you so much, Brian and Jody, for that. I have one question, though, because the picture is great, and it's wonderful, and it's a great mosaic, as you're talking about. By any chance, and if you don't have it for this past year, maybe you can look at it for next year, a video that just kind of summarizes, because I think, Amanda, any chance that we, if they did that, we might can post that and share that out on the city's website and Facebook page? We'd like to be able to promote it, I think. I don't want to speak for Scotty, for the staff, but I think there's a good likelihood it might get promoted if such a thing exists.
Yes, we have a lot of videos from the event, and we're working through cutting it right now, and we're editing it down. There are a lot of videos already on our Facebook page as well that can be used.
But if you wanted to assemble something and send it over to the city, I think that would be something that the community at large would like to see.
Understood, and we'd love to do that.
Using the city's website.
The chair now recognizes Councilwoman Brack.
Yeah, again, thank you for putting this on. I know it's a heavy lift. The second year is really that tough year, you know, how's it going to go? You said, "support for the third year." You know, Brian or Jody, is there anything in particular, anything specifically, that you feel like would ensure the success of a third year?
For us, honestly, we have such great support in the community on a lot of material support. Really, what it comes down to for us is how do we fill in that budgetary support? Because there are some expenses that we have. We purchased the turkey, and we also have expended materials that we use each year. So we really need to kind of find how to gain that foundational support year to year.
Do you know what's that dollar figure?
Yeah, and actually, I've created a budget overview that I can pass out to you, and you can keep and discuss amongst yourselves.
But the venue and the size and the park and everything?
The park is, honestly, when, I just want to say briefly, last year, when we came from Aiken, South Carolina, where we saw this first, and it was downtown in Aiken Alley, it was very special, and we were hoping it would be here downtown, and Parks and Rec said, "No, please, go to Timrod Park." And we found after year one that it was fantastic, it was amazing, it was the place to hold this, and this year just solidified that for us. The location there, behind the lot in Chase House, is absolutely fantastic. It works very well, kids playing, you know, running around, and the people everywhere, it was really well-designed for what we're doing.
Great.
So logistically, everything's good. It's the old adage, you know, money's the answer, what's the question?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neesmith.
I want to thank you guys, because I remember last year, the first year, when we met, and you guys told me what you wanted to do, and just seeing this in fruition for the second year just really blows my mind. Tell me, from the first year to this year, how has it grown? How much has it grown?
Yeah, so we provide first responder meals in addition to feeding the people in the parks. So first year, when all was said and done, we did feed about 850 people. 100 of those went to first responders, so that would be 750 in the park. This year, we were up to approximately 1,000, and only about 50 of those were first responders because the city police had someone come in and cook for them, so we didn't provide those meals. So we were looking at about 950 in the park.
Good, good. And next year is going to be even bigger.
That's right.
Yeah, we've had a really great return on this year. People have already mentioned, you know, to us directly as well as online, that how much they felt love from beginning to end of the event, and how much they wanted to bring their family next time and their friends. So it really seems to be expanding quickly.
Thank y'all for what y'all brought to our community, and seeing the vision in Aiken and bringing it here, thank y'all so much. It is greatly needed and appreciated.
So I too want to thank you. It's amazing how when you so love, love grows, and I know that this will continue to grow. Y'all, kudos. I love that plug, "Stronger Together," because we really are.
Yes.
And we pray that you will continue to grow, and we will partner to make that happen, hopefully. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you all. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Counsel, next, we will have ordinance in position.
I love you so much.
Bill number 2024-20, second reading. This is an ordinance to amend the budget for the City of Florence, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025. What say you?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Bill number 2024-20 has passed. Next, we have Bill number 2024-21, second reading. It's an ordinance to amend the due dates on Section 20 of the City Florence Code of Ordinance to align with the city's business license renewal date.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposes? The ayes have it. Bill number 2024-21 has passed. Next, we have Bill number 2024-22. It's the second reading. This is an ordinance to amend Article 1, Chapter 3 of the City of Florence Code of Ordinance to add provisions related to prohibiting ownership or keeping of livestock and wild animals and other matters related thereof, thereto. Is there motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh.
I see.
Who goes? We can finish this?
Once you do the motion and you have second, then you call.
Call for the, okay. So we now have some people that are here, audition, okay, to speak before council regarding this matter. First, we have Charlotte Ward. Ms. Charlotte Ward, would you please come forward? And if Nikki Zigafus, you can come on up as well.
Good morning.
Good morning. Oh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, yeah, I'm sorry. All right. Hello, my name is Charlotte Joy Ward, and I've resided in Florence County my entire life. For 26 years, I've lived legally in Florence County and traveled through and within the city with monkeys, and I've proven to be a responsible monkey owner. Why am I here today? Because of an irresponsible snake owner. And now a bill has been proposed that is going to prohibit my monkeys along with a variety of other non-dangerous animals. This blanket bill categorizes my monkeys with venomous reptiles, apes, large cats, and bears. Sounds a little harsh, don't you think? The state of South Carolina already prohibits the possession of apes, large cats, and bears. The current city ordinance makes mention of this law. To the best of my knowledge, I am one of three monkey owners in Florence today, and there's been several monkey owners that have resided within the city limits previously without incident. If my monkeys will be prohibited, then should all dogs, no matter size or breed, be prohibited in the city after the fatal incident that occurred on July 17? Should all terrier dog breeds be considered dangerous now because of one pit bull terrier? If that would happen, my mom's four-pound Yorkshire terrier would be classified as dangerous, and they would be classified the same because they are both in the terrier family. Or should the city just blanket ban all dogs? Absolutely not. The person that owned the pit bull terrier was charged and prosecuted using the existing city animal ordinance. The judge implemented the current animal ordinance under Section 311 Dangerous Animal Enforcement. Instead of prohibiting all citizens, couldn't the existing ordinance be amended by adding, "The judge of the municipal court shall order the owner or harbor that violates this ordinance to be prohibited from having any such animal." Wouldn't an amendment like this cover the snakes, the dogs, and other animals? I say this today because it is unfair that my one-pound tamarin and my 10-pound capuchia monkey be categorized with the same, with such dangerous animals. Many of you with dogs would not like your dog in the same category as a wolf, right because it is, they are both in the Canadae family, or your house cat in the same category as a tiger. And for the non-animal owners, the analogy would be, your BB gun would be classified the same as a AK-47. Would this be fair? There are several responsible exotic animal owners that own homes within the city limits of Florence, and they're scared to speak here today because of the fear of their animals being targeted and taken away once this bill is passed. Did you know the same monkeys that are defined as dangerous animals are the very same monkeys that are placed with individuals that are quadriplegics? They assist with their everyday needs, such as feeding them and helping them to get a drink of water. Helping Hands is an organization that has been around since the early 1970s and place adult capuchia monkeys with quadriplegics. Did you know the pot-bellied pigs are great pets for people that have allergies to animal hair? They're considered one of the most hyperallergenic pets. And did you know that a finnic fox, they only get two to four pounds, full-grown? And then we have the kudimondays and the kinkajews that are in the raccoon family and the size of a house cat. A sphynx cat, also known as the hairless cat, or the bangle cat, they're about 10 pounds and have been commonly living in households for many, many years. All of these animals will be prohibited, and we will still be able to own a six-foot, 200-pound kangaroo once this ordinance passes. Why are we lumping all these animals with already prohibited animals and venomous snakes? The proposed ordinance has made us feel like we have committed a crime for owning some of these animals, and many of us call this town home. I've spoken to some of you to find guidance with this matter, and your statements were, "We didn't even know you were here," and that's how I would like it to remain. I come before the city council to ask for one or more things: that the existing ordinance be amended with the examples stated previously. It is unfair and unjust that the people that have chosen to live their lives with these animals be punished because of one person. People like him should be listed in this ordinance as wild and feral, not these animals. Or amend the proposed ordinance to add a grandfather clause, so innocent animals are not taken from their homes. And add an exemption for 501(c)(3) animal rescues and USDA facilities. Remove monkeys and some of these other animals described previously. And add a registration process. Today, I ask you to put yourself in my shoes and work with us so we remain law-abiding citizens and continue to be responsible exotic animal owners in the town we call home. Thank you for your time and giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much. Counsel, if you don't mind, could we bring all of them, let all of them speak, and then we respond? So don't go anywhere. And Philip Goss, you could come up as well after Ms. Nikki Zigafus.
Hi. My name is Nikki Zigafus, and I've lived in Florence County for all 43 years of my life. For the majority of those years, I have owned many animals that are on the proposed ban list. I do not live in the city limits itself, but there are times that I do have to travel through the city with my animals for veterinary care. There's also the possibility that my property may be annexed into the city in the future. This bill is entirely unnecessary. There are already laws in place that can be used in instances where someone's life is in danger or is taken. When a woman in Florence was killed by a dog over the summer, the owners were charged with owning a dangerous animal. This law can be used whenever necessary. It's also absolutely asinine that this bill allows animals to be seized and euthanized before a hearing can even take place. From my own personal experiences with the City of Florence, when my life was threatened by a human, not by an animal, I'm sad to say that I have no faith in law enforcement to make the proper judgment calls when it comes to the lives of animals. Never in the history of governments have bans actually worked. Cities with gun bans still have gun crimes. Dry counties and towns still have alcoholics and drunk drivers, and no one is going to give up their animals just because people say they had to. What this bill will do, however, is label innocent people as criminals and cause animal welfare issues, since people are going to be too afraid to provide proper veterinary care or husbandry for their animals for fear of being seen or reported. If you do... If you do insist on this bill moving forward, it should include dogs. Laws must be based on facts and not fears. None of the animals on the proposed list have caused a single death in the City of Florence, but that cannot be said for dogs. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Now, we have Mr. Phil Goss.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Phil Goss. I'm president of the United States Association of Reptile Keepers. Believe it or not, there are enough people who have pet reptiles, there's a national advocacy like USARC to come and speak on matters like this. And before I get started, I want to make it clear, if nothing else, today, what that gentleman did with that snake is not responsible. That's not what people who keep reptiles do. What he did was something called free-handling, which means he kept a venomous snake, and he literally would just let the snake do whatever it wanted to do on itself. A responsible facility like places, laboratories that they call milking, remove the venom from the snake to produce antivenom, we use tools. This free-handling thing is some little, I don't even know what to call him again. It's just, it's not what responsible reptile people do. So, I hope that you don't think that people with snakes are all like this and handle their snakes like this. Also, most snakes are not venomous, so this was an issue with a venomous snake. The guy was totally irresponsible, not using the tools he should have been using. And luckily, at least there was secondary containment, and no snakes got loose, so it did only affect that individual. There was no real public safety issue. But again, I'm here representing responsible reptile keepers, and that gentleman was not responsible. Regarding what the couple of people said before me, we hate to see collective punishment, which is one, when there's one bad actor, bad apple, that makes everybody look bad and you pass a law. It would be like because one person drinks and drives, then you ban both driving and alcohol, or someone repeatedly breaks the speed limit, you take that person's license away, you don't punish all drivers. So, again, we hate to see collective punishment. It's just bad government practice. Regarding constrictor snakes and invasive species, the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources can ban invasive species. They actually banned a species of reptile just a couple of years ago. Those constrictor snakes cannot be invasive in South Carolina. They're over, the Burmese pythons in Florida are over 600 miles south of here. This climate is much too cold for those snakes. If they could have been here, they would have moved that far north by now. But again, they're over 600 miles away. They cannot be invasive species here in South Carolina. I would like to see a couple tweaks to it. It just kind of makes the city look like they didn't do their research, like removing the word poisonous. Reptiles are venomous, not poisonous. Also, serpents. If you have reptiles listed, that's going to include snakes. And I haven't, I've been doing this professionally, reviewing legislation for 14 years. I haven't seen the word serpent used in 14 years. It's a really outdated term that's just not used anymore. Again, to mirror what they said before me, you really should have a grandfather clause. There are a whole lot of people with animals that are going to be banned on this list outside of the reptiles, and at minimum, there should be a grandfather clause so that people can register those animals and keep those animals. Because, especially when they're pets, obviously, the woman who spoke first loves her monkeys. She's not going to surrender her monkeys. You're going to ban them, and she, as written now, she's going to be forced to rehome that animal, move out of Florence, or euthanize that animal, and you really hate to see that happen for a pet owner. Obviously, she's been responsible. Her monkeys haven't been found running around Florence, so she's not letting them get out, and she's a responsible animal owner who should not be punished. There are alternatives, like requiring escape-proof enclosures, secondary containment, which would mean, in the case of that gentleman, after he got bit, even after he got bit, that snake could not get out of the room. So, again, that's secondary containment, it is, and people just keep those animals without notifying anybody. Again, that's going to be actually more harm, possibly, for the first responders, and we don't want to see that happen. And I'm here to answer any questions if I can, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All three of you, we will open the floor for Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. First off, thank you so much for being here. I know that there are others, as you say, Charlotte, who are nervous about coming before us, so it's nice to have representatives who are willing to come up and speak and address. I don't think any of us on this council consider ourselves to be botanists or zoologists or anything of that nature. I think we are responding to a very serious matter that occurred, and this is legislation that has been in place in other communities, so it's not something that we created new. But I do think, Mr. City Manager and our attorney, there are some points that have been raised, and issues concerning exemptions, concerning grandfather clauses, registration, possible other, another approach perhaps, with looking at our existing ordinances. Would it be advisable perhaps for us to defer the second reading and allow staff and our attorneys to take a deeper look? Perhaps even allow members of the community who have an interest and would like to give input to meet with our city manager and provide some of that input? Scotty, Ron, is that something that we might can take a look at or not?
If I can, Madam Mayor. Certainly, it's council's discretion if you'd like to not pass this bill and have staff to look at that. We have worked closely with our attorneys on these issues. We do have some exemptions in there, and it talks about our UDO, our Unified Development Ordinance, and I do have Assistant City Manager Clint Moore can speak to that, but we do have some exemptions in there.
So, within the Unified Development Ordinance, it does have a few exceptions within allowing certain things outside of your household pets, which of course is permitted. It limits the number of dogs, number of chickens, things of that nature that you can have in a residential area. And then, it also speaks to your swine, horses, cattle, sheep, and goats, more of your livestock type uses, and that's dependent upon the size of the property and the zoning designation. So, there are certain exceptions built within the Unified Development Ordinance that allows different types of animals to be owned and maintained on their property. It does not speak to your reptiles or snakes or anything of that nature.
Thank you.
If I may continue.
Yeah.
Just with our attorney who's here, Ron, is that, I know that you and Luke and Mr. Ziegler, y'all have been looking at this, and we've been receiving information. I know all of us on council have been getting emails about this, and is there an opportunity perhaps to take another look into this if we were to defer it to next month?
Yes, sir. We have discussed this matter with staff, and as the City Manager referenced, we've looked at a number of different areas, but it certainly is within the council's discretion to allow more time and defer second reading while we look at any lingering questions for clarity or confirmation so that any concerns can be more thoroughly addressed or reviewed. That's certainly within the purview of the council, if you so choose.
Okay, thank you.
Before we make a motion, I'd like to hear from Councilman.
I just have a question. I think it goes, and I guess the deferment probably is the best thing here, but the question I have is pertaining to the grandfather clause. I don't know who can speak on this, maybe Scotty or maybe Clint. Scotty, okay. Well, if it's grand, if you're grandfathered in, does that include breeding? What if there was a, there was some mating or anything? How does that work? Is it the owner itself would be categorized as grandfathered in, or is it the animal?
Well, we've talked about that. It's not staff's recommendation to do a grandfather clause there. I think it would complicate matters there, and it wouldn't address the issue that was brought before staff. Grandfathering would allow the venomous snake to remain. We were under the direction from the public and from certain members of council asking us to bring forth an ordinance that would prevent what happened. This is our, this is what we've done. We've looked at Columbia, we've looked at Spartanburg, we've looked at language and the police powers that are given to the city council to ensure the public health and safety. So, we tried to present that in this ordinance there. It wouldn't be our recommendation. Certainly, we work for the members of council, and we'll do as directed, but we wouldn't recommend a grandfather clause.
So, I think, is that your?
No, I have a question. I have another question.
You have another question? Okay. So, Chair recognizes Councilman Braddy.
I'm wondering, and you may have mentioned it, Mrs. Ward, and I don't know what your occupation is, but a trial attorney might be a good one.
I worked for Florence County and have for six years, so we're always implementing and mandating what Florence County ordinance has in effect, so.
Well, you did a very good job. I had a question, I don't know if I missed it. What is the reference to USDA facilities? What is that in regards to?
That is in regards to if, right now, I know of one that actually comes to the City of Florence and actually did a show over the weekend for education, and they will not legally be able to come into the City of Florence to do those educational programs with any of these animals. And they do actually do educational with venomous snakes, but they're educated. They are, and they're actually licensed through the United States Department of Agriculture. When I say, I have a 501(c)(3) primate sanctuary, and it is outside of Florence, but sometime, when you rescue a primate or rescue another animal, or you're rehabbing a squirrel or a possum or a raccoon, you may have to bring that animal through the City of Florence, either to either hit the interstate for transporting to get that, or to take it to veterinarian care. I have property that is 200 feet from the municipal boundary, so if I ever wanted to annex that property, I still had to go through the City of Florence to go to my parents' house, and that will be unlawful, because there is no, nothing in this bill saying that I could even travel through the City of Florence. And when I say that, if I get pulled over and I have a monkey in my car, which, when I say that, they are properly restrained, they're in a locked enclosure, they're not running around free in the car or on a leash, they are properly retained, but someone that's not educated and just happens to know, "We have a ban," they can literally take that primate from me and then, whatever the discretion of the authority, you know, of law, that they can dispose of him, place, you know, and that's, you know, I've had one in my possession for 23 years. So, do you imagine having a animal, even if you have a dog or cat that you've had in your possession, five years, you love that baby, you know? So, for it to just be, okay, they're banned because of an irresponsible guy that does not handle his snakes properly, continues to not handle them properly, if you, all you have to do is look at his social media, he's not, he shouldn't, he doesn't represent us. We have proven to be responsible owners. I know I've owned monkeys for 26 years. I know Nikki has owned them several years. I know I've had calls all week of this, "There's a man that's got a 12-year-old pot-bellied pig. It's going to be banned."
I don't want you to, because we've got some more questions. We've got some more. Councilman Smith, you've got some more?
I got two for the city.
Two for the city?
Yes, sorry. One is pet store owners. Do our local, I'm surprised we don't have like a pet store owner here, do they sell any of the animals on the list that are in the city?
The only pet stores we have now is Petco and PetSmart. Pet Lovers has gone out of business. They used to sell some that could fall under this. I don't know about if they're under the last owner of him being USDA licensed, but no, he wouldn't be.
Yeah, to our knowledge, they were the only business that sold some of the, they sold snakes and some of the type of animals that would not be permitted with this, but they're no longer in business.
And the other question for city staff is, these primates that were mentioned, and that she referenced, the smaller ones that, you know, assist with quadriplegics, was there an issue that causes us to put that in there? Did we just, did we see it in other ordinances and add it? What spurred that? Was that in the previous ordinance? Was there a good justification or a reason to add those in, or, you know, just kind of?
Thank you, Councilman. As discussed, we looked at excerpts from Columbia and Spartanburg, and we also looked at Mount Pleasant, at other states, Washington. It's, we also have information from court cases throughout the country, including here, locally, Ward versus Town of Darlington. So, there are a number of various excerpts that we pulled when we created this. We didn't start from scratch. We did look at others and looked at what was relevant throughout, not only the South Carolina, but entire country, when there were bans on animals, and we looked at that entire list and started that. And then, again, we made those exclusion, as is allowed in our UDO.
Okay. Because I was just wondering if there was some certain event, because I would imagine that in the last 20 years, how we view the, these different primate species is probably a lot different than how it was, and some of those things might have been put in there just out of, you know, ignorance or just not knowing, you know, if there was other benefits. I just wanted to see if there was any, any kind of situation that we had had that caused us to add that, other than just researching other ordinances, like-minded ordinances.
Correct. Thank you. Now, we have Chief.
I think Mr. Goss spoke about first responders and safety, so, I mean, my question would be, and I don't know if Scott, if you can answer this, in a situation where there is an exotic animal in the house that we don't know about, how does that affect our response time to get that owner or that family member to safety and/or, you know, the medical attention that they need? I don't know if you can answer that or if.
I think I'll let the chief's police and fire chief, I think they'll be better to answer the said question.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilman, it would certainly affect our response and how we would have to spend an excessive amount of time there. I don't know. And with that last situation, we spent more than a number of officers that were tied up. So, certainly, it would affect our response time.
Yeah, I agree with Chief Heider. The, I'd say it would depend, you know, with us going to medical calls, if the call came in with a certain type of event, snake, about whatever the case may be, you know, if there was somebody that we could visually see, maybe not have persons much, but we would certainly make sure that someone was quarantined away from that individual before we made entry. So, to answer your question, it would kind of depend upon what it was and the nature of the call and those type of things.
Now, we have Councilwoman Neve Smith Jackson.
Okay, so, what we're saying was that we looked at Columbia, Spartanburg, and all these other areas, and they've passed these ordinances. Have there been any recourse or anything, lawsuits or any backlash regarding these ordinances since they've been passed the way they have?
In your packet, we did put forth on each person's desk a short memorandum about what we've done there. There are certainly a number of lawsuits. All were in favor of the municipality that passed those, and you should have about four pages there that was provided by our attorneys.
And so, being that the staff does not recommend grandfather clause, and that we actually did look at other municipalities, I'm not sure what would be the purpose of deferring.
Well, I can't answer that.
Chair recognizes Mayor Pro Tem.
I think the, as I understand it, there's some clarification that certainly would be available to look at how everything is classified, you know, and we've had mentioned certainly in emails that we received from a botanist at Appalachian State who sent us, all of us on council, an email about that. The biologist, and so there was concerns there. There's also been concerns raised here today. And instead of rushing into it without giving it another look, I think it would be available to us to do it. I don't think there's anything imminent that says we have to do it today, and that we can postpone it to January to give more time. I think certainly has the, is, would, in my opinion, be a prudent thing for us to do. And so I'm gonna move that we defer it, this matter for second reading until next month, to allow further input and deliberation, as well as input from individuals in the community. That's my motion.
It's been motioned.
Madam Mayor, if, if we make a motion to defer, and it, and it fails, can we make a motion to amend after that? Or would you have to make a motion to amend?
That's an attorney question.
Yes, sir, you could. If you vote on, or if that motion is properly seconded, and then it fails for lack of a majority vote, you could then make a second motion to amend the ordinance that's on the table for consideration.
And if we make a motion to amend now, then the deferral would go first, and then the amendment vote? If it, if it, would there be any need to make a motion to amend prior to the deferral?
In terms of the order in which you proceed, that's up to you in terms of which you want to consider.
So, so we need a, a second?
Second.
A second to the motion, okay? It's the se-, so with discussion, I do want to acknowledge, thank you all for coming. We recognize that we must do something. That irresponsible snake owner, something has to happen. We cannot have that in close quarters of families. And so I thank you for agreeing with us with that. But we too don't wanna rush to do anything that would cause any harm to... So I, I too agree with deferring, to make sure, to ensure that we are carrying this thing out properly. However, we are going to have to do something. We cannot allow this to happen and close our eyes. So it's been properly moved in second for deferral. All those in favor with the deferral signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. This motion has been deferred. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm, okay.
So I've been doing this 14 years, as I said, professionally, and I haven't seen a law passed in the last 14 years that did not have a grandfather clause. So I, I understand those old laws may not, they may have had lawsuits that didn't pass. I don't know how old those were. I haven't seen one pass that did not have one. And although I would hate to see it, you could not allow grandfathering of venomous snakes, and allow grandfathering of the other animals. So I understand you have this issue. I know you have to do something about it. I totally get it. I hate that it happened. It's unfortunate. But again, those are a couple of options for you to look at.
I, I'll recommend that, you know, you all have been corresponding through email. If there's anything that you would like to see, I can't promise you that it would be in there, but please do reach out through email.
Absolutely, thank you.
And if I may add one thing, the emails have just been coming to council members. They have not been directed to staff.
Okay.
So if y'all, if you have any communication, Mr. City Manager, would you like to share your email address with them, so they can send you the email, please?
I won't post it online, don't worry.
Sure, it's online as well. S. Davis@cityofflorence.com. S. Davis@cityofflorence.com.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Who would we speak with or get with in reference to assisting with the amendment of the proposed ordinance?
Scotty Davis.
S. Davis.
We send him everything his way.
Thank y'all so much for listening.
Thank you, thank you. Next, Council, we have Bill Number 2024-23. It's a second reading in ordinance to annex and zone NC-152499, West Edchfield Road, identified as Florence County map, tax map number 01221-01-140. So it's, it's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposes? The ayes have it. Let the record reflect that Bill Number 2024-23 has passed. Next, we have on the agenda, Bill Number 2024-24. It is the second reading. This is an ordinance to repeal Division 4 of Article 3, Chapter 2 of the City of Florence Code of Ordinance entitled Aesthetics Advisory Committee. What, what say you?
It's been moved in second.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor signify by, signify by saying aye. Opposes? The ayes have it. Next, we have introduction of ordinance. This is Bill Number 2024-25. It is a first reading. This is an ordinance to annex and zone RG-3. The property located at 2501 Alligator Road, identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 00125-01-004. What say you?
It's been moved in second.
It's been moved in properly second.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. This is a 101-acre parcel that is located just off of Alligator Road. There is a proposed subdivision going here. It has not made its way to Planning, or yes, the Planning Commission for Sketch Plan Review. We have received a submittal for it. Here's a little zoom in of the property. The proposed zoning is RG3. It is supposed to be a single-family residential neighborhood with approximately 330 lots associated with that. And the Planning Commission did recommend the zoning of RG3 unanimously. And this concludes staff's report.
Mayor Proten.
Just to, if you pull that map back up again, please. So the other properties that are in blue that are City of Florence, are they, that are residential, is that, are those also RG3?
It depends on, some of them are NC, the Neighborhood Conservation, because they were established prior to our Unified Development Ordinance. But the predominant zoning in that area, I, I think Wild, Wild Bird has some RG3 zoning in it as well, so that is a common lot size for that area.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman, you have a call?
Yep, my question is on a utility. Is there, what's the availability of city water?
Yeah, city water is currently available, however sewer is not. So the developer would be responsible for the extension of sewer.
Okay, is he aware of that already?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chipper Smith.
You might have said it. In this zoning, this is all single-family. Am I saying that correct?
That, that's correct. The RG3 does allow for some higher density, but they have to have some large land set asides and able to accomplish, in order to accomplish that. But the proposed sketch plan, we've seen, only proposes single-family detached housing.
Did you say this has gone through planning, or not?
It's gone through planning for the zoning recommendation, but the sketch plan is scheduled for January for review.
Okay. It has been moved in properly second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposes? The ayes have it. Let the record reflect that. Bill Number 2024-25 has passed. Next, we have introduction to, of resolution. Resolution Number 2024-20, I'm sorry, 43. A resolution to encourage staff to implement the Five Point Plan, Five Point Crime Plan. What say you?
Move through, make motion.
It's been moved in properly second. All those, well, I'm sorry, there's a discussion. There, there is a discussion. And so, yes, thank you so much. This Five Point Plan is something that we've been talking about. And as, as you all know, that crime is not just a statistic or a news headline. It is a challenge that touches our communities. It disrupts our lives and hinders progress in our city. Addressing this issue is not just about enforcement. It is about prevention, intervention, and collective action. And so we moved today, I pray that we do, to adopt and give our staff legs to implement this first step of reducing crime. If, if you say it so, the first, I would first like to make two amendments to this. We have on the first, on this five-step, five points, bringing back the cat team, and we don't want cat team. We want CPT, which is the Community Policing Team. That, it has to be amended on the resolution. And also, we real, we recognize that the gun buyback, while it was a good idea, research has shown is not as effective. And so we want to make an additional amendment on that one that encourages law and our, our law enforcement to invest more in technology, and look for better ways of policing through technology. That will give all, all four, all five of the points that we have. Is there any questions, or?
Madam Mayor, ma'am.
Sure.
If, if it, if it's okay, just to make sure I review this, and make sure I correct the resolution, and I'll just read the key part of it. It says on the Resolution 2024-43, referring to the Five Point Crime Plan. Whereas the Five Point Crime Plan includes bringing back the Community Action Team, and you're saying to amend that, to say the...
CPT.
Which is the community...
Community Policing Team.
Policing Team, okay. So to bring back the Community Policing Team, Police Force, that's number one. Creating incentives for members of the police force to live inside high-crime neighborhoods is another initiative on the Five Point Plan. Initiating a gun buyback program to take guns out of high-crime neighborhoods is another element. Bringing back Camp Fever as Camp Caraway in memory of Sergeant Terrence Caraway.
Yeah, we gonna get to that one.
And cracking down with strict enforcement on business where criminal activity is occurring with a very high incidence. So the amendment you would like to make, one of them is to change Community Action Team to Community Policing Team, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's Amendment Number One, and the second amendment is...
Is with the gun buyback, to, to introduce more ways to use technology through policing.
So it would say initiating a gun buyback program to take guns out of high-crime neighborhoods, and introduce technology into, advocate for the enhancement of technology?
Well, can we, can we bring Chief Heidler up?
Yes, that's what I'm looking for help.
Yes. Yes, so, so Chief Heidler, could you tell us how, if we, what more technology could do, and what are some of the ways that you are policing through technology now?
Well, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, I have a number of techno-savvy officers on the department. They are constantly looking for different ways that we can utilize. And I believe that we should be utilizing as much technology as, as we have the ability to get. Certainly in, in place right now are Flock camera systems. I can tell you that, and I presented this to staff last week, that, oh, since, just since the implementation of the Flock camera system, we've, we've arrested 42, and this is just, this is, these statistics were from the end of October. We, we've arrested 42 wanted suspects. 26 stolen vehicles have been recovered, 24 stolen license plates, and over 70 investigations were cleared because of information that we received from Flock. And that was just from October. And I was just getting some information today about what we've done the last month and a half. So it's, it's gonna be more than that, obviously, from our, so.
How, what about safety of the cops, of, of our police force? That, um, technology, does it bring safety for them?
Oh, absolutely. I think when you look at, especially the deployment of drones, we utilize those regularly for Overwatch for our tactical team. They are able to gather specific evidence. And in fact, we recently had a, an active shooter situation, where officers were, were shot at and fired upon. And we were able to, our tactical team was able to breach the door of the location. And one of my drone pilots was able to fly the drone into there and gain critical information in regards to the whereabouts of that active shooter. So, yeah, we, we are proponents of technology, for sure.
So just to be clear, if we were to amend the resolution to add the words following, where it says initiating a gun buyback program to take guns out of high-crime neighborhoods, if we use the words "and utilize advanced technology to assist in crime prevention", would that address that issue? Would that be useful?
Could, could, just one more time, sir, on that?
Just, the second amendment that was being proposed would be to say, "And utilize advanced technology to assist in crime prevention."
Absolutely.
Okay. So I think that's right.
That's including the bug, the buyback program?
Yes.
Well, we're not including the buyback program.
I think she made her amendment.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the, we are replacing...
Substituting, okay. That's what I was not clear on. Okay, so we'll be substituting where it says initiating a gun buyback program to take guns out of high-crime neighborhoods, substituting that with utilizing advanced technology to assist in crime prevention.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now we will hear from Councilman Braddock.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that was the case, 'cause I, you know, the gun back, buyback, you know, it's not budgeted, and, you know, where are you gonna get money? You don't know if the guns are local, or, you know, it's just, I just wanted to make sure that it was a replacement, not an addition.
The, the Flock cameras, are we planning to get more additional Flock cameras?
Well, you know, that obviously is a tremendous expense. And we have, I, I think we're working with some folks in our legislative delegation to talk about that again.
Okay.
But, yeah, the, more of those, it would be great to.
So in addition to the Flock camera, what other technologies are, do we have? I know you said the drones, so it's just the drones and the, the Flock cameras right now?
No, ma'am. I mean, obviously, the officers are wearing body cameras. We have cameras in the vehicles. We have a new records and management system that is, that is really huge to us, because what we had been utilizing was on a 1997 platform. And so we are able to gather a lot more data, and, and enter it into this program that is available at the fingertips of officers now.
And I'm glad to know that...
It's gonna be a greater assistance the further down the road we go with this.
And it's good to know that we're gonna start utilizing technology, because there was some new technology that I learned in Tampa over that weekend, so we gotta talk about it.
Okay, absolutely. Well, I'm gonna tell you, I'm learning about it all the time, because, like I said, I have techno-savvy officers that are always bringing me new information to consider.
So I'm excited about us using that technology, 'cause I have the, definitely have some good ones that's coming up.
Great.
Okay, now we have Captain McCall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a, you know, this is a, a form of, of record. So I am in favor of this proposed resolution, because I firmly believe that no one should live in fear of violence in their own community, or be afraid to step outside of their home. I've attended countless community meetings and spoken with many residents, and I'm confident that they will appreciate the mayor's initiative to make crime a priority for our city. That said, while I support this resolution, I want to issue a word of caution. I want to issue a word of caution. Often, crime plans, while well-attention, can unintentionally strain relations between law enforcement and the community. As someone who grew up in a high-crime area, I witnessed firsthand the tension, that tension of such measures can, can bring about. It's crucial that we are mindful of these concerns as this plan is implemented. I've spoken with the mayor, and I've actually worked with her on this, on this plan. I've spoken with the City Manager, Scotty, as well as Chief of Police, Allen Howler. And they assured me that it will work diligently to address these potential issues. Lastly, let me be clear. While I'm in support of this crime plan, if the strain between law enforcement and the community becomes too great, I will be one of the loudest voices opposing this measure. I want to ensure that we build a safer Florence without sacrificing the trust or unity in our community. That being said, I believe this resolution has the potential to make a real difference in addressing crime and improving the safety of our community. With thoughtful implementation and community collaboration, I am confident that we can achieve these goals together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that include, is that about the Community Policing Team? Your concerns?
Well, and, and so, and as I stated earlier, you know, I've lived in a community where there has been emphasis, emphasis on, on, on crime. And, you know, oftentimes, you know, in underserved communities, or excuse me, underserved, that's a bad word, in high-crime areas, you know, there sometimes is an unattended consequence with it. And I just wanna make sure that we're continuing to do the right thing as we're doing now. I feel like our law enforcement, I will greatly say it since I've been on council, has been doing tremendous work in the neighborhoods. And I think that, that the relationship between our law enforcement officers and the community has been great. I just wanted us to make sure that we're conscious about when we're, when implementing this crime plan, that we do not risk that relationship that we do have. And let's, you know, make sure that we continue to do things the right way as we're doing now. And again, I appreciate you for your hard work and definitely, Mayor, for making this a priority for the city.
Will you be working on this to ensure that your concerns are being addressed?
Oh, yeah, and I, I spoke with Chief Howler this morning, and we've worked on this. Again, I would, I would like to have that dialogue, continue to have dialogue with the community and those, those law enforcement officers who are constantly at those community meetings. They are having a dialogue with the community now. So I guess, I guess it's, it's an even play both ways. And I, I think long as that we continue to have that dialogue together, this will probably not be an issue at all. But I just wanna make sure that we, we're just caution of.
And, and I, I do, I, I thank you for that. I, I do want the, the city to know that this is a working document. We are not sketching anything in stone. We do things that work. If it doesn't work, we don't do them. And so we will continue to scratch claw and do whatever to make our city safe. But we do have to go on and finish voting for this. So if you all don't mind, I, I'd like to make the amendments. And the amendments being, number one, the Community Policing Team being added, where the, the CAT team is at there and, and.
Substitute.
Substitute, replace, I'm sorry. And then, second, I'd like to replace where there is a gun buyback to utilizing advanced technology to assist in crime prevention. All the, is, do I have a, well, that mine the motion. Is there a second, you second? So now we vote, is all in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Let the, let the records reflect that it has, the amendment has passed. So now we've got to vote for the resolution itself. But before.
As amended.
As, as amended, as amended. So is there a motion to?
I think it's still on the floor.
It's still on, already on the floor. So now all in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? All, the ayes have it. So before we move on, I'd like for us to take a moment. These things that we are now putting in place, we have Sergeant Caraway's wife in, in the audience. And would you stand and please come up as we honor Sergeant Caraway, who has given his life, just, yeah, come up here, given his life. I knew him personally, and of course, I, I know Allison personally. Terrence, Terrence mentored some people. I own a beauty salon and barber shop, and he frequented that barber shop. And there were some parents that were in, that worked for me. And he mentored some of the kids. So I knew firsthand what he did. So having a camp named after him is appropriate. It's not because you're friends. It's, it's appropriate because it's just the right thing. And so I just wanted to come and just, just have her to come. Would you care to say anything?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Barnes, Council, for reintroducing Camp Fever. That was very near and dear to him. He loved the youth. And he wanted to make sure that every one of the youth realized that their location and their situation didn't define their destination. And that was a way and a tool he used to empower the youth. And I'm thankful that you are continuing.
Yeah, I got you. Thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Resolution Number 2024-44. And it is a resolution to amend the conditional grant and development agreement for the property located in the Overlay District. This item may be taken up in executive session. Okay, so we're gonna deal that in executive session. Now we will have reports to council.
And Scotty, before you do the boards and commissions, I would like for you to go back and add the Housing Authority. I think we missed an appointment on there to include my appointment back on Housing Authority.
Now, I, I think last week, we passed a motion that it's, it will only, we will not add anymore because they requested that we didn't, and that's why there was no more appointments to be made.
Right, there's currently five members, and one of them has expired.
One seat, one seat's not available to even appoint for. We can't touch it.
Right, I think, what do you mean, one seat?
There, the, the, there's a seat that we've taken off. It has not come available for us, so we cannot touch it.
That wouldn't be the first one we vacate? Because you initiated vacating that one back last year, was it?
I'll suggest we, speaking in executive session.
Cause that's, yeah, that's not on, it's not really on the agenda. Okay.
City Manager report.
Cities Managers, okay, City Managers report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Just a couple of updates for you. As mentioned earlier, you should have had notice about design guidelines. We'll have a meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, excuse me, Wednesday, December 11th at 5:30 to go over design guidelines. We'll be soliciting public input into the update of the design guidelines for the Overlay District, as well as we'll be providing a draft for the updated downtown design guidelines. You certainly all are invited and asking the public to attend. That's Wednesday, December 11th, 5:30 here in Council Chambers. Wednesday, 5:30. City staff members will be going to Spruce Pine, North Carolina, on tomorrow. As you know, we adopted that community. They are hard-hit by the hurricane. They have thirty-two employees. City staff actually adopted those employees. We've collected a number, a substantial amount of dollars and, and gifts that we'll be taking up to those thirty-two employees and one police dog. So we'd like to thank Councilman Jabeley for providing some chocolates there, some local chocolates there. So we appreciate all of that. And again, the hard works of city staff there. And again, we'll be leaving tomorrow to deliver those goods. They are still struggling in that community. We're trying to have lunch with them, and we had to actually have that catered because they don't have adequate water and supplies in that area. So we will be making that trek up tomorrow. The, in our fire department, we've placed a lot of emphasis, as you know, and, and we thank you for the funds set aside for our fire department. We have two fire engines and one ladder. Over four million dollars in apparatus we will be receiving soon. We have one fire truck here. We should have another about January, February of next year there. And a ladder will probably eight, ten months out there. So we're proud of the fire department. And hopefully, we won't have many requests in this budget here from the fire department. And finally, I'd like to also recognize I just received information this morning. Councilwoman Jackson has been appointed to the Board on the National League of Cities, National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials. She is a board member of that national organization.
And representing the state of South Carolina.
Representing the state of South Carolina. That concludes staff's report.
Okay, next we will have the Mayor's Report. And I will just talk about our Christmas tree lighting. It was a wonderful event. Hannah and her team staff has done a wonderful job. We had Santa Claus there. We had a two-story foot slide. And the children did not care that it was freezing cold. They were on it with no shoes on. They, they really just enjoyed themselves. The police gave away, they, they gave away toys. We had the Christmas tree lighting. We had a digital Christmas tree that Hannah said took hours and hours to program. I think she said four hundred hours to program, but it was done. And when you ride through the city of Florence, know that some hard work went into it, but it was a labor of love. And we, we pray that they would feel that love. So hats off to all of the staff that worked on that. Kudos to all of you. That, that does it for my Mayor's Report. Next, we have committee reports. We have the Business Committee Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Business Committee met on November 21st. And we received, in attendance was Mayor, as well as Councilman Braddock, and Mr. Davis, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Hemingway were also there. As was our post and courier representatives. So thank you for coming and keeping us informed on everything. Thank you. And we got a really good update from Michael Hemingway on the, what's gonna be happening at the water treatment plant. We had, the pictures were brought up and showing us over the next however many years it's gonna be, as we go from ten million gallon per day capacity to expand to twenty million gallons a day. And the processes, it was a really good discussion. Michael, as always, you educate us wonderfully, and we thank you for that. That's very, very, it was very helpful. And certainly, all of us on council benefit from being educated on that. We also had some conversation about Ask SI and what its capabilities are. There was further updates on different projects from Mr. Moore on the stormwater projects at Cedar and McQueen, as well as some road improvement projects. And we went over that. There was additional road work is gonna occur on South Dargan Street. We were told about that. We're also giving updates on Carolina Theater, the rail trail, and a project for 170 West Evans. And that's basically was just an update that we got. Unless, Madam Mayor, you or Councilman Braddock have anything further?
No.
To add, then that's our report from the Business Development. Oh, and so.
We can do it afterwards.
Do we do the appointment to the committees now? Or do we do that?
After the report.
Cause we, we now have to appoint our committee members.
That is correct.
Chair, do I go ahead and do that now?
The, what I would do is, since we've started on the reports, we finished those reports. But I think you, you would have to, since we have a new mayor and Members of Council, you would have to elect the chair. I think we did that last meeting. So those members should be added to these committees. You also have, Madam Mayor, several appointments that as mayor you would need to make, such as, again, the Flats Committee you have. You also have the City County Conference Committee. Those are done by mayor, and you would need to make those appointments.
The question I have is, do we do that now? Should I do that now?
I think we would finish the reports, and then we could go into that.
Okay.
Okay, so as the Business, I, I guess I'm talking. So I'll let you go on, and we'll let the Finance Audit Committee go, go next.
Okay, well, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. We met last Wednesday on December 4th. While we did have a packed agenda, we were only able to address just one of them, and that was discussing executive session. So unfortunately, I cannot share too many details. But as the saying goes, when you have too many lawyers in the room, the meeting typically tends to go quite long. So, but we'll, we'll tend to get that, that executive session matter resolved in our next meeting, hopefully.
Okay.
And that will conclude our report.
Well, I come as the chairperson of the Community redevelopment, the Development Committee. And we did not meet, and we're not meeting this month for the holidays. So we will see you in, in January. That completes my report.
Madam Mayor, one more thing, too. I want to, I wanna take this time to ask you all to reconsider in taking away the Marketing and Public Relations. That was the one committee that, of course, you guys created back in 2020. In addition to that, it's the one committee that basically bridges the gap of communication trust and transparency between the city and the community. And I just don't want to send a negative message out there to the community that we don't value that. And that we would definitely wanna continue our Marketing and Public Relations Committee.
Well, what has happened, it's not on the agenda, but we, because we were functioning a lot without the Marketing Committee. The Marketing Committee was being done by the staff. And, and by, and we were doing it for our own committees. We moved, we, we made the decision on, on that because the staff is overwhelmed, and we've got to find ways to free them up. However, we would have to readdress that. It's not on the agenda. And so I think we hear, I think everybody heard that, but we will move forward.
I would like to, Scotty, the staff is overwhelmed?
I, I did not recognize anyone on the floor. I, I didn't reckon, I didn't recognize anybody on the, and it's not on the agenda. So we can't just put things on the agenda because we wanna talk about them. It has to be on the agenda.
Right, and I just want to really urge.
And it's not urging, it has to be on the agenda.
And I, and I know there's no way for it to get on the agenda, but I definitely wanted to urge council to rethink public, because I know it wasn't over staffing. I know we did a lot of things.
So we, so we're not gonna take any.
Campaign awareness.
Yeah, they, the staff has been working on SI before I got here. So they've been, they've been working on that for a long time.
SI is my baby. I don't know if we've worked on SI.
The, the app that they've worked on, the name was done on you. But, but we're gonna move forward because it's not on the agenda. We don't wanna address that while it's not on the agenda. And so we, we need to move forward to. And so we, we need to move forward to the appointments, the appointments of executives, assets. We know we've got to appoint.
The committees. Is this the time to appoint the committee members? Okay, do you want to do it one at a time in the same order?
Yeah, we will do, um, business, finance, and community.
Okay, as the chair of the business development committee, I'd like to appoint Mayor Lithonia Peaches-Barnes, as well as Councilman Braddock, to be back and serve back on that committee again. That's my motion.
Well, first, we've got to make, we've got to appoint the chair.
That was last...
We did that all, all, okay, so then we're good, okay, I'm back.
Okay, yeah, as chair of the committee, we were tasked with coming back this month with our appointments, and so my motion is to appoint our mayor, Lithonia Peaches-Barnes, as well as our Councilman Braddock to serve on that committee once more.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The ayes have it. Now we will hear from our finance committee.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. I reappoint Councilman Braddock and Councilman Smith as a reappointment to the finance committee board, committee, committee, finance committee, sorry. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Next, we have the community redevelopment, and I would like to appoint Councilman Shaques McColl and Chipper, Councilman Chipper Smith, to my committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The ayes have it. All of the committees have been appointed. We now need a motion to enter into executive session.
Some move.
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor, let's move to executive session. I need you there. We've now returned from executive session. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Some move.
Second.
Second, all right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Council, I'd like to return to Resolution Number 2024 dash forty-four. Resolution to amend the conditional grant and development agreement for the property located in the overlay district.
Some move.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes opposed? The ayes have it. Let the record reflect that Resolution Number 2024 dash forty-four has passed. We now have a port, reports, appointments and boards of permissions and permissions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first appointment that we have is accommodations tax. There's one expired term and one vacancy. Seeking reappointment is Jacqueline Campbell. New applicant's Valerie Paul. First making the nomination is Councilwoman Jackson.
Um, I would like to nominate Valerie Paul.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Next.
Next, we have Councilman Smith.
I'm going to defer.
In the planning commission, we have one expired term on the planning commission. That is the vacant seat. And it's councils, if it's councils will, we'll keep the vacant seats vacant.
Yes.
Next, we have Civic Center. There are two expired terms, one vacant, one vacancy there. Seeking reappointment is Alan Griffin and Scott. Applicants Claire Brockington, Ivan Hanna, Twana Hanna, Barry McFadden, and Victor Webster. First making nominations is Mayor Barnes.
I'd like to appoint Victor Webster.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Next, to make a nomination is Councilwoman Jackson.
Um, I will defer at this time.
Next, we have Councilman Smith.
I'll nominate Claire Brockington.
Second.
Moved improperly second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Next, we have Design Review Board. There are two expired terms and one vacancy. Seeking reappointment, Michael Paget. He holds the position of the engineer. David Lowe holds the position of landscape design. Seeking new applicants is Nick Gaddy. He's qualified to serve as a professional architect. First to make nominations is Mayor Pro Tem Jabeley.
I nominate David Lowe.
David Lowe takes the landscape design requirement. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, we all just, I got to remember. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes?
And then we have Councilman McColl.
Um, and the engine, I'll, I'll defer at this time. I'll defer to next month.
Next, we have Construction Maintenance Board of Adjustment and Appeals. There are four vacancies, they all fall to Madam Mayor. There are no qualified applicants at this time.
Well, there's no one to appoint.
We have Parks and Beautification, there are two vacancies. We have new applicants, Kiana Brown, John McLeod, and Christopher Wenzel. Making nominations is Councilman Smith. There are two nominations for Councilman Smith.
I defer both.
We have Veterans Park, there are two expired terms and one vacancy. On the Veterans Park, seeking reappointment is Bruce Malik, who's a veteran, and James McLaughlin is a veteran. New applicants Claire Brockington, Jarvis Edie, Shoniko Joe. Making nominations falls to Councilman McColl.
At this time, I would like to nominate Jarvis Edie.
Second. It's been moved in properly second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Next, uh, seeking, uh, excuse me, making the appointment is Madam Mayor.
Uh, I'd like to defer.
And we also have the vacant position.
Yeah, and we have a vacant position, and council, if it is okay, we would like to leave that vacant spot, slot vacant in honor of Barry Wingard, for all of his service that he has done for the city of Florence.
For how long?
It's vacant, it's vacant, the vacant slot. So it will, the person that comes on in April.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
We'll do the appointment.
We'll do the appointment, yes.
Next, we have the resilience and sustainability advisory committee. Councilmembers making that is the vacant position as well. Public safety citizens review board. We have seeking reappointment Riley Props and David Jones. We have new applicants Chandler Anderson, Raquel Campbell, Tatiana Lance, John Rosado, Shelby White, making the nomination is Councilman McColl.
And just for clarification, on those, the reappointments, all of them have completed the necessary requirements, like the police review, no, excuse me, the, the citizens, uh...
Seeking reappointments.
They have all completed the requirements, yeah. So I like, because it's, I know there's a lot to get on there. I will reappoint Randy Props.
Riley.
Riley Props, excuse me, yeah, sorry.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Next to make nomination is Madam Mayor.
The second person...
David Jones.
David Jones is already...
Seeking reappointment.
Reappointment, I'd like to appoint him.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
That concludes the reports on boards and commissions.
If that is it, I believe that is it. Do we have?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I've got to vote on my picks.
Oh, yeah.
And so I would just do that, okay. So I have to, with the city county conference committee, we have two gentlemen who have been serving, that's Chipper Smith and Brian Braddock, and I will keep them on, and I will join them to be a part of that committee. So it would be Chipper, Councilman Smith, Councilman Braddock, and Mayor Barnes. Okay, as far as, what are the other ones, Scotty? The Civic Center, I already did.
You've done that, you have the flats committee.
And the flats committee, I would like to appoint George Jabeley. And is there, the other one, I think there are no appointments, no applicants available. And so I can't make appointments to that one.
Mayor Barnes, just to clarify, the Civic Center appointment you made earlier was for a member of the board. You also can either serve or designate someone else to serve.
Yes, well, I, I will serve, yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, the Civic Center, the P D R T A, you have that appointment. Currently, Councilman Jabeley serves that. His term doesn't expire to 2025. You have a housing authority resident commissioner. Their term isn't expired yet. The construction and maintenance board and appeals, we have nine appoint, four appointments there. We have no applicants. The conference committee you've done, and you also have the flats committee appointment that is currently done.
I will, I will defer, defer to the other ones. I will stop, stop there. I will look, because if they serve at the will of the mayor, I will look at the other ones.
Okay.
And that's it.
I make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Let's vote, we got to vote for that, too?
Yeah.